Good evening, everyone. We'll go ahead and bring the meeting to order. Thank you all for being here this evening for our November board meeting. I'd like to ask to roll the call, please.
Lou, Bowman, here. Disharum, here. Cole Hauser, here. Park, here. Reece, here. Dauen, here.
Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, now moving to the public participation portion of the meeting. And Dr. Parker will begin with the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much for the right of tradition. And I'm going to ask for my assistants to come forward. Those of you that have something to give to the board. Those of you that were here. It sounded lovely to me. Anyway, those of you that were here last year, we have students from each of the buildings come and presented the board. And I'm not going to be nearly as cute or as original as they were tonight, but I can feel like I could do that two years in a row. So I just wanted to let everyone know that you may or may not know this, but yesterday was Board Member Appreciation Day. And it's not something that is highly publicized, and unless you're working directly in the school system or looking on Facebook, you don't even probably realize that's going on. But these seven people up here are well deserving of a School Board Member Appreciation Day. So I want to tell you a little bit about our board members. Last year, they spent 115 hours in meetings volunteering to serve on our work of education. They worked tirelessly, and they bring us a top-notch education for all of our students here in Dunlap, as well as for our staff, who have a great place to go to work every day. So we've accomplished a lot. And I sat down just to make a list of what have we done with the board, the administration, and the staff, working together just in the past year? And I wanted to highlight some of those things and to thank the board for their participation and their support in that. Just in the last year, we've approved a new strategic plan and a balanced scorecard. We've implemented the one-to-one pilot in our classrooms. The board encouraged the administration to approve upon our communication, which resulted in Facebook pages at all of our schools and in the district, as well as Twitter and Instagram accounts. Project Purple came to Dunlap High School with one of the best speakers, in my opinion, that our students have seen in a long time on drug and alcohol abuse. And that came directly from Mr. Dauen, and we came to my office and we talked about it. And a dream of ours became a reality last year. It was an awesome experience if you weren't part of that. We developed employee handbooks, evaluation tools, job descriptions for all of our staff, which was very much needed. The board participates in board retreats. They also participate in continuous improvement and professional development. And their goal is to continually improve the work of the board. We recently adopted flexible spending accounts for staff, which is a huge benefit to our staff. It'll be coming here right after the first of the year. We added modular buildings for classroom space. We've been very creative with our facilities, and our board is extremely supportive of facility upgrades to all of our buildings. The drug testing procedures were improved in our school district for all of our students here at the high school. We created an athletic leadership team, educational foundation, and a financial advisory group. And a lot of that came from ideas of the people that were sitting up here at the board. We developed criteria for identifying at-risk students, and a recommendation will be coming to the board in January on how we're going to best assist those students. And our staff has become much more diverse and better match our student population, and all of our buildings and staff are working together to make sure that Dunlap is an inclusive and welcoming environment. So to the board, I want to thank you. That was just a small list of things I could come up with that you've had a part in, and I appreciate that. I could go on and on, but really the point is just to thank you from the teachers and the administration. And I have some assistants here today that are going to give you just a small token of our appreciation to thank you for your ongoing support of me, the superintendent, and for my entire administrative team. So, thank you. And let me just say, if you ever want administrators to do something, you just send out an email and you say, "Who would like to help me with the board presentation?" Because I think I got a response from almost everybody when I finally just had to say I only needed five. So they were much appreciative of the opportunity to help this person tonight. Next, I'd like Shawna Segler to come forward. And Shawna is going to present some information on our one-to-one pilot. I don't know if Mrs. Bowman's presenting as well.
No, I'm just going to plug the computer in for her.
All right, Shawna, floor is yours.
All right, thank you, everybody, for giving me a few minutes of your time. I teach seventh grade English at Dunlap Middle School, so I just wanted to show you a few things that I'm doing in my room with the Chromebook cart. I've been part of the pilot since it started, so I have the Chromebooks in my room. And I want to show you a little bit about how I'm using Canvas in my classroom. I think one of the most important things to remember about Canvas and this new pilot is that all teachers are going to be very different in how they utilize this in their classroom. And I fear that one of the biggest misconceptions among the public is that everything is computers and everything is going to computers. And I just wanted to show you quickly an example of what my class looks like. So just so you can see here, I have my assignments grouped. These are my first quarter assignments that were done on computers in my class. So there's eight assignments there. So out of the, I think I put it there, 27 assignments that my students submitted first quarter, only eight of them were on the computer. And I think that's something I just wanted everybody to kind of, it's kind of an eye-opener, like, oh, okay, everything's not on the computer. I teach grammar and writing, so all of our writing assignments. And I have a discussion about every 10 days on current events. Those are done on Canvas. But all of the grammar work, diagramming, you know, the sentences, labeling sentences, all that stuff is still done paper pencil, because it's the most effective way to do it, I believe. So I just, I wanted to get the misconception out of the way that everything is on the computer, because as you can see here, it's not that way. We're in the second quarter now, and I've had four assignments so far done on the computers. It's going over really well in my room. My students really are very receptive to it. It's wonderful to have access to a lab all day in my room. So when we want to start typing, you know, if we get our rough drafts done in 20 minutes instead of 43 minutes, I don't have to wait to find, you know, wait till, okay, well, I'm not signed up to the lab till tomorrow, so now we have 20 minutes to kill. We can immediately grab the computers, and kids can just go ahead and start their writing assignment as soon as they're finished. So those are the things that I believe have been the most positive about Canvas in my middle school classroom. And that's really all. Did you guys have any questions? I didn't want to take up a lot of your time. I just wanted to give you a little bit of a different perspective on how it's being used differently in the different schools.
I just want, one, just do you feel you have resources that you need to continue it going? Like, are you having any glitches with the system or anything slowing down?
No, we had one day where the internet was down, and that was MediaCom. And I think that was the only time we've had a glitch at all. I feel everything is very adequately supported. You know, it's been, it's been a learning process with getting used to Canvas and using, using it in the room with the kids. But it's amazing to see how quickly the kids, you know, they soak it in so much quicker than a lot of adults do. So it's really easy to teach the kids how to use all the technology.
That's a great update.
Yeah. And if you guys ever have any other questions or you'd like to see what I'm doing in my room, let me know. You know, obviously, I don't use it all the time, so if you did want to come in and see the kids using it, just send me an email, and I'll give you a date where they are going to be using the computers. Because you can't walk into my room and expect, the computers are not always out. You know? We're doing pronouns right now, and we are reviewing and, you know, finding the subjects and the object and possessive pronouns. That's going to be done on, on paper, for the most part. So if you would like to see Canvas in action, let me know, and I'll give you some dates that it's being used in my room. Okay? Thank you.
That is all I have. I just broke from tradition.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you, Dr. Parker, for your report. Well, now moving to the public participation portion of the meeting. Is there anyone who would like to address, address the board at this time? Okay, all right. If you can, have you given, you have any, okay, very good. I'll just read a few statements. I know you've been before the board before, but before addressing the board, I'd like to remind you of our process per Board Policy 2230. We ask that when addressing the board, please identify yourself and be brief. Comments shall be limited to five minutes. The speakers ask to please conduct oneself in respect and stability towards others. Individuals less than 18 years of age are permitted to address the board if accompanied by his or her parent or guardian. The board typically does not engage in two-way conversation during the public participation portion of the meeting. Any follow-up response will be addressed by the administration at a later date. At this time, I'd like to, and you've already given your name in, so we will give you the time. Thank you.
Hi, thank you so much. Whenever I'm able to come, I just want to take a few minutes to share some things. And tonight, I want to offer you three compliments, because I sometimes don't think you hear enough. I'm out in the community, sometimes even more than I'm at home, and so I wanted to share three things. First of all, I am my first college freshman. I just want to thank you for the education that she received. She is flying high. Her academics, unbelievable. We actually have a problem that we don't have enough undergraduate courses to take as her early courses, because they won't let her enter major until she's a junior, because it's highly competitive. So she called me the other night and said, "Mom, I guess I'll get a Spanish minor." Oh, okay. So it's just what a great problem to have, because she had so many AP courses and so many CLAP and so many of the dual credit. And she is tutoring other kids on her floor. She's just so well-rounded, so prepared, and I want to thank you for that, for being my partner and helping my kid, because I do not want her living with me when she's 26. Love her. But that's first. Second of all, big compliment that I got this morning. I ran into Tamika Rutherford, old friend of mine. She teaches for Peoria Public Schools at Treewind. She has a very big boy that is a lineman for Central. Obviously, we know, we played them here a couple weeks ago, and she stopped me, made sure to come over me to tell me what a credit our players were to their character, to their response when the game was over. She had no reason to come and find me and tell me this, but she wanted me to know that, because they've not been treated that way in other games. And she said Dunlap was high-class. And so I want to make sure that gets passed on. If you'd like, brother. Okay, so I just was so impressed by that, that was, I thought that was really cool. And last but not least, I thought it was also great to see Heather Bowman at the Future Ready Workshop. You're doing a lot of things right now that is, that are addressing all children. Yes, we have kids that need AP and that need college prep and that are ready, but we need to address all kids to be college and career-ready. And seeing her there where we were talking about resources for kids that might not have broadband. And sometimes people think, oh, they have everything, but that's not all kids. And you're doing everything possible to make sure we're addressing those needs. And if you don't know, Greg and I's dad grew up with nothing. He was so poor, sometimes he didn't eat. He didn't have clothes to wear to school. He had to put cardboard in his shoes. He went to a one-room schoolhouse, and he was born in a house, not a hospital. And he was principal of this building when it was built, where it is today. So every time I walk in here, I remember, it was never a thought that Greg and I were going to go to college. And now our kids are the same way. And so it only just takes that one opportunity. So thank you for providing that for all kids, because it was public education that made the difference for my dad. And then he helped, I mean, let's be real here, he's the one that carried Dr. Collier for 25 years. So for those of you that know, you know him to speak on truth. So it's just, he was a significant, stop talking, Dr. Parker. He was a significant part of that, and it was public education that did that. So thank you for always remembering this for all kids. And I just wanted to compliment you, especially with Board Appreciation Week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else want to address the board? All right, seeing no one, we'll go ahead and conclude the public participation portion of the meeting. And we'll move into information and discussion items. And board, you have school activity account reports available. Are there any questions regarding those? Any comments? All right, okay, we'll move on. The next item we have is information regarding the high school random drug testing report for the month of October that was available in your packet. And Mr. Fryder is with us this evening. If you have any questions regarding the testing. Mr. Fryder, anything that you wanted to add or?
So far, so good.
Still going good? Very good. Thank you. All right, and Mr. Shatterton? And the instructional leadership team will present an overview of Dunlap Middle School at this time. Welcome.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity. It'll take me just a second.
All right, no problem.
Beth could start with a little humor. I thought I would. I'll, my comments are, commenting to Dr. Parker, she mentioned that we should keep this probably 10 or 15 minutes. Apparently Dunlap Valley didn't have that same expectation, so I told her that I had a little bit. She gave me this little chuckle, and I've learned over the years that that little chuckle is not, she's not laughing with me. You don't want to have the conversation about the chuckle if it comes back around. So I'll stick to the cut time frame that she gave me, but I would like to thank you for this opportunity, because we could go on and on about all of the administration and the staff here, and go on and on about the wonderful schools we have in our district. But I'm going to go ahead and highlight a few specifics here from Dunlap Middle School. First of all, I'd like to acknowledge our instructional leadership team. And if you guys could stand up real quick. And I even told Mr. Hanson, if he wore clothes, toes, shoes, and a tie, I want you to make him introduce himself. So I'm going to go ahead and introduce some, Al Hanson, Miles Burchie, Cole Stevenson, Terry Hadley, Jody Brooks, Jackie Fennel, and Shawna Segler. Okay, we, you guys can go ahead and sit down. I told them that that would be the extent of it. We have a very, we have a lot of fun together, and we also have to remind ourselves of our norms quite often. But we, we actually carry between six and nine people on our instructional, formerly known as BLT. And actually, this summer, we had BLT, because we actually put the BLT team to rest and started the ILT. I don't know what kind of sandwich that's going to be, but I'm sure Mrs. Bowman's got some ideas. But anyway, so we, this summer, we said, we had some people that decided to step off the team and retired and things like that. So we're like, oh, who are we going to have? Well, we don't have a science teacher, so Mr. Burchie's relatively new to the building, so we kind of recruited him. And like, well, who else do we need on here? Really, Jody Brooks always is willing to help out and give us input and everything, so we just kind of asked her to come and share some of her ideas, and then we tricked her into being on the team. And some of the team members have been on longer, so it's kind of a standing invitation as far as how it came to be. And we may be here a long time, but, there we go. I have a PARC scores up here, and I'm not going to spend a lot of time on it, but I, I'll just highlight. We got better in sixth grade ELA from last year to this year. Same for math. Same for seventh grade, seventh grade level, and same for the eighth grade, at the eighth grade level. And I have the breakdowns over there, and we're constantly looking to improve. We revisit our, our testing and data probably every, probably four weeks, really, probably about once a month. But most importantly, what we've been looking at for our PARC scores is the cohort data. And we've improved in each grade level in both areas for, for each cohort group. And we're, really, we're looking for the correlation as far as the star core, the star scores go with those types of things. And then we compare it to the COGAD local assessments, all the aptitude testing and all those assessments that we have. We don't want to become so overwhelmed, but at the same time, we want to make sure that we're in tune to how we're performing on the PARC, because it is the most visible assessment that's out in the community. So we're really proud of our success. Actually, Mrs. Bowman shared with us a, a report that, we shared with some staff members when we were tomorrow at our faculty meeting, as far as it has the, the standards, and then it has the state averages, the district averages, and then our averages. And then we can take that back to the individual level. A lot of our assessments and our student progress and student growth is done at the team level and by grade level and each individual student. But we do look at overall for our, all of our students and their success.
What's a cohort group?
Oh, it, it's like, last year, sixth graders are now, this year, seventh graders. And now they're sitting in eighth grade, so how, how did that group, do I apologize about clarifying that? Shawna, highlight a little bit about the Canvas that we're using. The best part about Canvas is that it's set up, that it's designed for, for your individual pacing, for your affirmation and your implementation in the classroom, and just your general awareness of Canvas and its capabilities. And Mrs. Bowman dedicated, about once a month, our PLC is dedicated to technology. And a lot of that's self-paced, as I mentioned. So staff have modules that they're working through, and there's different things that we need to do. And usually, I just kind of walk around and check on different staff members and talk with them about where they're at. It's about a month ago, I go to the first classroom, teach fourth in there or something, go to the next classroom. I get about three classrooms, and I hear some noise down hallway, and I go down, and I go in the classroom, and there's like eight or 10 teachers in there, and I just kind of join in for a minute, and I realized that this teacher's been using it for assessments. And then, of course, directly links right into Power School, so the assessments get graded and they go right into Power School. The teacher gluts head and validates it and does all those things, but it's already in there. It's very easy and simple for them to do, so lots of the teachers were wanting to know how to do that and be able to implement that. These are a couple of students that were taking the test, and then there's an example of the test that they were taking, and then this is how it looks for the teachers. I know you can't see real well, but I, I just wanted to show you, like, one of the little quirky successes that we have when, when the technology is available for the students to use. I'll get right into the SMART goals that we have, and I had a question earlier about the, the focus on the, the social and emotional needs. And when we felt that we've had academic goals in the past, and we probably will in the future, and it is very important, as I alluded to, we, we don't ignore the academic needs. But we really want to focus our goals this summer as we're developing them on the holistic student and involving the entire building in ownership of those, of those goals and then the action steps. How, how can we put action steps in to achieve our goals that everyone can invest in and commit to and be a part of and have ownership of? So we really incorporate the, the middle school concept, and our, our first one is developing the students' emotional well-being. And then the second one has to do more with the social awareness for our students. And then we, we just piggyback off of the indicators that the district are using. We figured we, because we've done our own surveys in the past, and it is just kind of a, it's not a hassle, but we weren't going to reinvent the wheel if it was already there. We're able to find our indicators with what we're already looking at the district. So the first thing, one of the highlights was some of the activities to just get to know who we are as individuals. And that, that's not just staff, but that's really the kids. So this quick little video shows you some of the faces of Dunlap Middle School. Not yet. Anyway, the, the video, I'll skip a little bit ahead while I'm pulling up the video. The intent is for students to identify who, who they are in one word. I think it was part of the, one of the second step activities. And then from there, we put it into a good deed wall, where any staff member within the building, it could be a custodian, it could be somebody from the kitchen, anybody that, that observed a student doing a good deed, they could go up and ask them their name, and then they would just write it on one of the little sticky notes, and then we posted it up on the good deed wall. We did that for a week or two, and then we, we started the activity with the students, and the students would write out good deeds that they saw from their fellow classmates. So anyway, that, that's just an example of how, how we want students to embrace the quirkiness of middle school and who they are, and be comfortable with who they are before they start developing to the person that they want to be. All right. Hopefully, this one won't take as long. Now, I've shifted to more of the social, social awareness, and some of you may remember Channel One as a student. It used to be just a local news. Actually, when I started teaching, we used to watch Channel One. And we're trying to find a way for students just to be able, be quickly aware of what's going on in the world without developing full units and lessons and things around that. So CNN Student News is just the newest version of Channel One. It's just a quick, student-centered news that's on every day. Our goal specifically is that we just have it at least once a week. Students are exposed to CNN Student News at least once a week. And then the grade-level teams decide when best, maybe it might be because of what's going on, it might be in a social studies class, or it might be during study hall, or they just make sure that all the students get to watch it once a week. Some of them watch it more often than that, some of them correlate it into what's going on in the classrooms and lessons, but, but the goal's specific, just once a week. And this is just a couple of the students.
Hello, this is Zach Shatterton, from Dunlap Middle School. And one of our goals this year is to create better citizens. And in order to do that, we feel like our students should have more of a global perspective on things. So we started watching CNN Student News this year with all students here at Dunlap Middle School. Today, I have two eighth graders with me, Eli and Ben, who I've heard rather enjoy. Looking forward to watching CNN. Why you are such avid CNN Student News watchers.
Well, I like watching how they talk about the debate and CNN's programs.
Well, okay, that's one way to put it. All right, Eli?
I like that it's, it's not very confusing. They're straight to the point, and they don't put in a bunch of the community and stuff. It's more fast.
All right, well, well, thanks for being here.
So we have lots of students, like, requesting to watch it more. They're watching it more on, on their own time. And then a couple of our other activities that really we've been doing for a period of time are just giving more emphasis and attention to it, incorporating as many people as we can. Every year, the sixth grade does a multicultural fair, and it is one of the highlights of the sixth grade year for our students. They divide up into groups, and they study a different culture and their customs, and they create poster boards on it. The last couple of years, we've had the Native American group come in and do a presentation, and they do a little dance. And last year, it got a little rowdy, as a couple of our top performers, the sixth grade dancers, really decided to just join in with them, get the dance off of the chief, which I feel like both of our students won, but I think the chief declared itself the winner. But anyway, it really was spontaneous, and we had a bunch of students up on the stage, probably 100 kids up there dancing. There's a fashion show that both staff and students participate in, and of course, there's the, the display booths with, with food and the, and the customs and cultures and some of the artifacts. And we have all family follow, they come to multicultural fair. That's one example of how our students are more aware of their social surroundings. Really likes to stay close. Another one is Mix It Up Day. It's a national day. It's been around for probably 15 years. It's just trying to break down some of those social barriers that maybe exist. And one of the biggest indicators of that is during the lunchtime, students kind of congregated around the same tables each time. And then Mrs. Hadley recruited some additional help this year, and got the students mixed up at different tables, and then she did a quick little presentation and talked with them about different things that they could talk about, even though they're uncomfortable sitting with these people that they maybe don't know as well, or maybe even don't really like. And some just common conversations that they can have to get to better know their fellow classmates, fellow classmates. And then staff participated in it as well. I got a little clip just because it was Mrs. Brooks' birthday, and it happened to be on that same day. But anyway, Mix It Up Day is, is one example, and then the next one is Red Ribbon Week. Every school celebrates Red Ribbon Week. They have their dress-up days or wherever the red ribbon. We have the announcements that are kind of associated, they are associated with living a drug-free life. This year, we just amped it up a little bit. We had staff participate in a skit and include the students. Obviously, the Panther was involved in it, and it was just really a skit to help students have some strategies for, for how to manage social situations where they may be presented with, you know, drugs or alcohol. and how to navigate through those. And it was really effective because we had students, peers presenting and doing that. And also they had a pledge day where the students signed the pledge to live a drug-free life and hung those on those lockers. But it was by choice, but we had great participation rate in that as well. Red Ribbon Week was a real success this year, just really because of the additional effort put forward to it. These are just some examples of, this is in our tent and in the past we've done where we collected data on students volunteering away from school. But these are just kind of some activities that we hear about kids coming back and saying, and we're not saying that we're responsible or we're facilitating these things. We just think that this is really cool how our kids are contributing to our community and to society. I think some of these pictures are from the Spooktacular at Wilderweight, but they've participated in local community events, whether it be the St. Juve Walk or parades. And the other three are from the Greater Peoria area Honor Flight. Students choose to write letters for their big mail call session and things like that. It really correlates to the staff as well, we've had several, several staff, I don't want to name them. We had several staff that chose to take their own time and money to pay for their trip and to take time off, to take their personal time to go on that trip and support our veterans and we really, I've gone back to the Welcome Back and I see students out there, it's 10:30 at night and they're cheering and welcoming troops back. It's really special, you hear about kids doing the Adopt a Mile and helping clean, they do the Midwest Food Bank, they do the Lowes efficiency. You hear all these different activities and we just think that's wonderful for kids to be able to be aware of their surroundings and their communities. I'm going to shift gears a little bit because our Parents Club really help out, not specifically, but indirectly in a lot of different ways. Whether it's we need a gift for the kids that participated in Mix It Up Day or hey, we'd like to have yoga for this semester a couple of times. Do you mind paying for yoga instructor to come in? All these different activities and Parents Club are always so supportive and willing. For several years, they've been working on an outdoor patio for us right off the IRC and it finally happened, this passed the ball and they got it all put in. And they're still working on the functionality of it, but that was a big success they've been working on for, they sold a lot of popcorn and soda and candy bars and games to be able to build that patio for the kids. We look forward to using it. And then Dr. Parker mentioned about the modules out back and you know, we needed it for the growth of the students, but there happened to be one extra room at the very right corner of the modules this year. You saw last month that the Light family was here, they helped put in the outdoor Charlotte's classroom banner. Well, they also were very generous and they outfitted that extra classroom this year with a sensory room. You can see Manny and I taking a well-needed break during the day. We have many students that use it, not just students with various needs. I've taken kids out there, they're just, they're having a real rough day and we go out there and hang out. It's really a huge asset and we're very fortunate and appreciative for having that, not only for the space for it, but also for the equipment for it. And of course, we're here every year, it seems like, for something that the Panther Palace is doing, they make blankets for the Salvation Army. Dr. Parker put in the garden, not that the kids always necessarily like what we ask them to eat out of the garden. Libby doesn't really like radishes, we've discovered, but it's been a great learning opportunity. But most recently, they've acquired a press for t-shirts. So I've asked Mrs. Stefan and Mrs. Windsor to once again come and they brought a couple of our students. We have Seth and Lucas. We've got to stand up now. And they brought some of their handiwork, so you get t-shirts tonight. It's not all formal and real nice like the ones Dr. Parker, these are just leftovers.
You didn't have to say that.
I'm sorry, they're not leftovers, maybe the prints. They're extra transfers, the way she calls it. So anyway, I don't know what t-shirts you're getting, but Seth and Lucas took the time this evening and we have lots of activities right now. They're doing the food drive and I think it was Wake Up Wednesday was the thing today. So it was all breakfast food yesterday, it was tutti fruit Tuesday, so it was pan fruit, it was mac and cheese Monday. And I think it's Thankful Thursday, Thankful Thursday, so it's Thanksgiving oriented food tomorrow that they're collecting. Students go around during study hall and Dr. Parker and Mrs. Bowman and Mrs. Bond have been over to help us collect the food with the big wagon and then take it all in front for you. So anyway, thank you for this opportunity, appreciate all your support for Dunlap Middle School. I can answer any questions or I can just sit down?
I have a question.
Yeah?
Are you looking at standards-based grading?
What's that?
Are you looking at standards-based grading?
I learned a lot about it tonight.
The school, I mean?
We have not specifically.
No, thank you.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
That's fine. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Charlatan and your whole team, appreciate your information. The next thing we have board on our list here for tonight is information regarding revisions to board policies. There were quite a few, if you count almost 20, a lot of them are just revisions. They're all just for information and discussion at this time, we'll take action on these policy revisions at the December Board Meeting. I know there were a couple of questions, maybe on a couple of policies, anybody have anything that hasn't been answered or any other questions regarding?
This is a minor thing and I'll just mention it in front of the whole board, but I think it's more of just maybe a typo. In the first policy, two dot 120, board member development. The proposed draft includes the optional language that refers to SB 100. And then the final cleaned up copy without all the redlining on it doesn't have that language in it.
The final copy is what is current right now.
Oh, okay.
So you have the red line, we've changed the proposal, and then the yellow sheets where?
Comments and explanations.
And then you have what we have right now, so you can see how it's going to change.
Okay, I always get that backwards.
I know.
Yeah, okay, great, then everything's in that was recommended.
Okay, thank you though for pulling it out, Cheryl, to get clarification, anybody else have any other questions?
Thank you for Cheryl for that because I completely mistook the administrator for a minister that I sent out two more, I was totally wrong on that, so.
Just a reminder, the board, you'll I think have about 20 policies the next two months. We just, we got a packet of like 55 policies or so.
Every month?
The next two months, yes, and then I anticipate we'll get another.
A lot of them are just revisions.
Yeah, they are, they're minor revisions.
There were two here that were new, yeah, that'll be adopted in December.
Exactly.
Other than that, I think most of them are just minor revisions, board revisions. Okay, so put your glasses on and make sure that you can read because we have plenty of them coming our way. And I, you know, I know we talked about slowing them down, but it's kind of tough when they keep coming at 20.
Yeah.
And we'll be way behind if we don't keep up with it. So if you have any questions, please feel free to ask and I know that Dr. Parker is trying to get that out to us, you know, the board package.
We'll try to do that again on leave.
Okay, we have a few extra days, hope you go through those. All right, thank you. We'll move on. Information regarding the destruction of closed session audio recordings is available in your packet for review. This is the standard procedure, were there any questions regarding that? All right, thank you. Information regarding the 2017-18 school calendar is available in your packet for review. I know there were a couple of questions about the layout of it, did everybody have a chance to review it and take a look at the new layout?
I just had a question, I had talked to Lisa, I don't know if she sent out it out to the whole board, but suggested that I bring it up. Who is the team that actually puts that together?
That's on that information item that I think I attached, let me pull it up here, it'll tell you who it is.
What we, what I was wondering way back when, let me see if I can pull my notebook here. We just kind of realized that break was taken so late. It was like, there was just, you know, it was right like two months before school was going to be dismissed for the summer. And you were kind of like, why don't we just be dismissed for the summer, you know? And why don't we have it, could we have it earlier? Like where this proposed year, I think was, where it is this year is a good year, next year it's a little later. I don't know if that's something that people are interested in changing, think of college students who I kind of Googled all the college breaks and they seem to be not in April, but they're always in March and this way families would be able to maybe take a vacation with their college students.
It's set for March 30th through, they return on the 9th, it looks like, of April.
So in the future, going forward, just keep that in mind.
And we can certainly discuss it or take it back to the committee, but I don't know, Heather had some thoughts on testing.
The only, so if we were to go the week before Easter, it's that park window is generally from the beginning of March till the end of April. So we could do it either way, it just depends. So where it's currently set on the calendar, we would probably do the park testing, we have a 30-day window. So we would probably do that prior to break. As opposed to if we're going to move break up a week, that wouldn't give us that 30-day window. And it is a guestimate, I mean, because they don't have next year's dates out for us and they won't until the summer. But when you can set a window, but if you were to move it up based off of where the dates were set for this year, we would probably have to move that part window for after break. So we can do it either way, it's just something that if we did want to look at changing that, I'd probably want to take that back to the committee just to discuss that with them.
Well, this shouldn't just be me, I mean, I don't know what everyone else thinks, but I did realize like you'd really have to work around a lot of activities when you plan that schedule.
Beth, I had a question too, when you were looking at the dates, like for college spring breaks, since my daughter's, it's my first year having a college student, but your kids have been in school a bit longer, do the colleges always have the exact same week for spring break? Or does it depend when they start school, so they're kind of in the same boat?
I think Illinois does, it's generally the same time, I can just go along with the two or three, I guess it's four or five.
Yeah, I think they vary sometimes and they fluctuate a little bit. And if you've got kids, I've got five, so I've got multiple colleges to work with, so no matter what week you pick, vacation.
They typically don't want to go spring break with us.
And the other part of that was people like when it's winter time and it's snowing, you just want to get out of here. And then it's time for spring break, it's always a beautiful sight and you really don't, you want to get out to the rest of the issue. So those are the only two comments that I had.
And I just had a question about the Wednesdays, did the parent survey come back that people like the half-days on the Wednesdays?
That was not one of the questions.
Oh, okay. Is it just, we do that because it's the most efficient use of the time because they already have the, what do you call it?
The PLCs.
PLCs, yeah. Is that why we do it?
That's my understanding as far as why it was set on those days. If we moved several years back, those days were the PLCs.
I don't have any particular opinion on when the spring break should be, but the selecting criteria should be, you know, kind of what is the right educational purposes, I think. Vacation purposes.
Because everybody's like going on vacation too, so. No, I agree 100% and the committee, I'm sure there's a rationale behind the setup and the dates. I think we can take the feedback and you know, if it worked some years, fine, but to your point, you know, Heather, if it's, we're here for students and academics and, you know.
I mean, that's kind of obvious though, you can't work around park and we got to, I mean, we have to work around the park, so.
We'll take a look at it and if we need to make change, we will, otherwise we'll bring it back for approval next month.
Very good, well, thank you for that. The next thing we have is Mrs. Bowman's going to present information and answer any questions about the school report card that you may have.
Right, and I put together an overview presentation, there is so much information out there on the Illinois School Report Card, but the latest ones from '15, '16 were just released on October 31st. So wanted to share this information with you in a timely fashion and I've got an overview for you and we can, you know, stop if you have any questions along the way. Basically, just a little summary focus, it's really, we're taking a look at enrollment, composition, student performance is a big part of that, teacher composition, and then really get into a little bit of the meaning behind some of the information out there. So this graph here just displays the total number of students enrolled in the district over the past five years. The exact numbers are listed below the graph there, but you can just see our steady increase as everybody is aware. I did link this and I won't show it every time, let's see if it'll take me to it now, but if you click on that link on the side, it'll actually take you to the, to the Illinois Report Card and oops, it's not going to show up on your screen, let's see. There we go, drag it over there for you. But this is actually what it looks like on the website, you just never know, this site can sometimes be a little slow, especially when it first came out. So that's why I did the screenshots in the presentation. But in many of the different areas, you can click at it, click on it with a five-year trend or you can take a look and it gives you a multitude of other information out there. So just wanted to make sure and show that to everybody, but I will exit of that and get back to the presentation. This just shows our diversity here amongst the district and this shows just the overall picture from last year. Again, if you were to go up to that website, you can see the five-year trend, which is there on the side, but you can see our makeup, I won't read that to you. Also, it shares information on low-income students. This current year, our Title I status and funding is based off of these numbers. So this school year, you can see the buildings are on the right are the ones that did qualify for federal Title I dollars based off of that low income rate.
What's the threshold?
We've got a variety of percentages, banners at about 13%.
I mean, to be designated Title I, is it a percentage?
It's based off of your overall composition, so it depends, they take a look at the district as a whole. So while our percentages are low relatively compared to other districts, we do still have buildings that qualify. Students with disabilities, we've got 12.1% of the entire district and those will be students who have IEPs, Individualized Education Plans. English Language Learners, our percentage this last year was 5.6% and that varies from building to building. But again, you could take a look at that five-year trend on that website. And our buildings vary quite a bit, while the overall district is that 5.6%, some of our buildings are much higher than that. Student attendance, this is just our attendance rate in general for the district. And you can, all of this information, I do want to point out too, if you wanted to, this is the district information overall, but you can look at each individual school and get all of the same information, so it's the same regardless. Our student mobility rate is relatively low, but you can see it does kind of fluctuate there and that's students moving in and out during the school year. If you go onto the website, you can click on state comparables and get all sorts of other information there as well. It does share information about our teachers on there, our demographics, education, our ratios, total FTE. Something new on there that I did want to point out because it has been highlighted in the press somewhat is that teacher attendance is on there. I just wanted to point out that they really take some old data, this is actually from a 2013 report and they do track the number of teachers that were absent 10 or more days, but it does include FMLA or other breaks such as that. So it's really not the most accurate data, but it has been out there, so I just wanted to point that out to everyone because that is new to the report card this year, yes.
Question about the pupil-teacher ratio, does that include classrooms where we have special needs students like life skills and those? Are they factored in to that ratio?
Yes. And then this is a new piece to the report cards this year as well, so I wanted to point this out. It takes the assessments, the park assessment and the DLM assessment, which Ally will talk a little bit about, and it gives you a percent of students ready for the next level. So it takes those students that were at that meets and exceeds level on park and it does the same thing with DLM and it puts them together and it gives you that percentage that is on there. So again, some new information I wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of. I do have some tidbits of park to share, there is tons of data we could get into, but this is just an overall comparison of our academic progress here in the district. Up on the top was this last spring and down below is 2015. And so you can see how our percentages have stayed pretty close to the same, somewhat have gone up a little bit. I do want to point out though, from 2015 to 2016, the test, the assessment did change. So while this is the data we have right now, we have these two years of data and we're looking at cohort data when we're setting targets and everything, it's still not quite comparable data. And so I'm excited to have a couple more years of data under our belt because then it'll really give us a more accurate picture of how our students are doing and growing.
And how did it change?
It was initially given in two different time periods, so there was a performance-based assessment portion and an end-of-year. and an end-of-year session, those were combined into one. They kept elements of both of the assessments, but it obviously had to be shortened because you were taking two separate timeframes and combining them into one. On this next slide, this is just specifically ELA, so that last one was combining the math and the ELA together, so this one is just the ELA separate. You can see there, the percentages where they fall, and we're taking a look at there. And then I have the exact same slide for math, so you can take a look at those percentages also. And again, you can go onto any of the school pages and get their specific information as well. I did break down a little bit just by grade level, I didn't take every grade level that was on here, but I did wanna share the levels that we will be putting onto the balance scorecard. So, these are the ones, we've got third grade on there, so you can see this last year, we had about that sixty, sixty-three percent of students meeting or exceeding. And then if you take a look at math, same thing there, we've got sixty-five percent there meeting or exceeding, exceeding, excuse me. And then fifth grade is also on the balance scorecard, so we put them on there. Sixty-five percent meeting or exceeding, and then same thing with their math. I don't wanna go too quickly through these, but just wanted to make sure we were highlighting that. And then eighth grade is also on there, so you can see they were at fifty-nine percent for ELA, meeting or exceeding. And then for math, we've got them there as well, doing pretty well there, at that seventy, seventy-one percent meeting or exceeding. This is a new feature on the website, and it's really best viewed if you go out to the website and take a look at it, but it compares subgroups, so you can really, it helps you dig a little bit deeper into the data, and you can break it down by low-income, you can break it down by ethnicity, you can compare all sorts of great data on there just by selecting a summary or a specific grade level, and then scrolling down and looking at those demographic options that you wanna choose. And you can actually select even more than one area, say you wanted to look at low-income and ethnicity, or you wanted to look at some other factors on there, that's all a part of that. I will point out, you know, it says our gap is greater between, and you're gonna see this, we've got a higher gap than we do at the state level, so we do have some more disparity. And it's, our students are performing higher, while our low-income students are still performing higher than the state, that does create greater disparity, so that's something we're definitely working on at those buildings to make sure we're trying to improve and bring those scores up. And I will let Ally just talk a little bit about this one.
DLM is the Dynamic Learning Maps. It's an assessment that's provided to students that are typically intellectually and developmentally delayed significantly. The state has always looked at making sure a district doesn't go, or is somewhere in between one to two percent of their population who takes this assessment. So through an IEP, we have to indicate reasons why we feel the student requires to take the DLM. It is provided to students at the same grade levels that park is, it's third through eighth grade and also eleventh. It's very visual and also done on the computer, but teachers have to put information into the system based on how the student can respond. We have students with eye-gaze machines or that have to use some sort of assistive technology or hand-over-hand sort of thing in order to respond to questions. So we're looking at really significantly delayed students that are taking this assessment, and there are about twenty each year in the district that do take it. So here you can see the district composite between two thousand fifteen and sixteen, and then students also take the math, ELA and science, just like they would for park.
So they take this in place of, did you say all that?
They take this in place of park, yes. And it's a longer window, because each student, based on their needs and based on their, the information that the student, or that the teacher inputs in the system, the state will release what they call testlets, so possibly two testless, testlets per day for the student. So they'll get a math testlet or an ELA testlet, and I'm probably giving you more information than you need to know, but in order to, in order for the student to do the assessment, the teacher's given like a task list or a materials list that they need to provide to the student to, to complete the task. So it could be household items, or it could be things that they're used to and they have to either identify or spread or pick out things, and this is how they do their assessment. It's very visual and hands-on and more appropriate for those students.
So it looks like we're underperforming in the state and the district, do you know why? That would be easily rational for that.
You know, I, I can't speak for other districts and how they qualify students to take the assessment. Our students are literally the most significant students. Many of them are immobile, many of them, like I said, use eye-gaze machines, they have intelligence, but very limited intelligence. I don't know what the student looks like in other districts across the state and how they identify those students. So it, it's, it's hard to determine why that is, but yes, we are lower than what's indicated by the state.
So it's our, we get to choose which students do that?
We have very minimum, minimum number of students.
And why do we choose a minimum?
Because I'm a stickler with being on, you know, I don't wanna be under the microscope of ISBE, so we stick with the standards that they provide to us. And when they say, these are the students that should or should not qualify, I stick with that information and make sure that our teachers provide that documentation and support to justify why those students are determined to need that.
So are all students in the district given one or the other test?
Yes.
Okay, so even if you have students that have special needs or disability on IEPs, they're taking the park?
Correct.
And so that's figuring into our score overall, yeah.
And then there are only two other students in the district that could be deemed life skills but are in cross-cat, very significant students that require this assessment.
Great.
The next one on here is the eighth graders passing Algebra I. I guess it's important to note that not, all eighth grade students are enrolled in an Algebra I class, so this just signifies our students within the district, and I know this is something that is on our report card, so I wanted to make sure that we were sharing this information. I think it's also important to note that our current course that is offered at the eighth grade level is eighth graders, we have them taking Algebra I honors, and that's not necessarily the state criteria, it's just Algebra I. It does not have to be the honors. So, we do offer it for high school credit and at that honors level, and not all schools amongst the state do that, so that is something that we are taking a look at. Also, freshmen on track. Freshmen, students are identified as on track if they've earned at least five full-year course credits, so ten semester credits, and have earned no more than one F in a course. So that's what signifies this percentage here, and you can see our district, we're at that ninety-one point two percent there. Graduation rate is something that has always been on the report card, but they have added a six-year, and I know it's kinda small and hard to see the numbers there, a six-year graduation rate and a seven-year graduation rate now. So prior to that, it was only a four-year and a five-year, and what that does is it captures those students who may not graduate in a typical four years, so that they're still counted in a graduation rate. It's not extremely typical that we have those students, but we do have some that stay on until they are older, and so this will capture those students and provide us some further data on that over time. College readiness is another piece that was on there, this was based off of ACT this last year, so that'll, I'm sure, change for next year, now that we'll be giving the SAT, but that percentage is based off of receiving a twenty-one or higher on the ACT.
Ian, I had a question about that.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, is there a sense that I noticed, I was thinking that it gets lower for math, not just for us, but for the state and for reading and science. Do people think that the ACT score of twenty-one is a, a good college readiness standard? Or is it kind of arbitrary? Why, I mean, why is English so much higher than everything else?
Why is that score so much higher than everything else?
You know, for the state and for us, I mean, why the variation in readiness? Is there a chance that it's the ACT as being the measure? Or it, or is it that we, our children are not as ready in the other areas? What do you think?
I'm not certain. I'd have to look into that, and I can if you'd like me to, but I'm not certain.
Well, I was just curious.
They look kind of low for some.
That is interesting, in our other district, we just had, we didn't have English and literature, like here we have two periods. We just have one.
As a, as a block?
Yeah.
But as you look to, across each subject matter, the differentiation between district and state are the same. So where English goes down, or reading goes down for the district, so does for the state, so that could be indicative of the test more than.
That's what I was wondering, is it the test or is it?
Maybe it's our really good English teachers.
You know.
I also think the, the score of twenty-one is usually the, about the lowest that colleges will admit students.
Oh.
You know, below that, like ICC is twenty-two.
Okay.
But then you can take some, you know, test placement tests.
Right, or remedial courses before you're ready to take those regular credit courses.
If I had to guess, I'd.
Another piece that's on here is post-secondary enrollment, and so what this does is it takes a look at the percentage of our graduating seniors enrolling in a two- or four-year college. And so up top, I guess the easiest way to point this out is, you know, within that first twelve-month period, we have pretty high percentages of students, but then you do see a slight increase going down. So, you know, in two thousand sixteen, we had eighty-five percent within twelve months, but then eighty-six percent within sixteen months. So it just shows the difference of how, there are a few more students that are being captured who might be enrolling a little bit later in a two- or four-year college program. And this is the remediation courses, this is something that is also on our balance scorecard, so I wanted to make sure that we have this on here to share this information. These are students who, when they go on to Illinois Community Colleges, may not be prepared to take the regular level math or reading courses, and so they have to take a remedial course. So, our numbers for that reading are very low, the math is a little bit higher. I can't remember if we spoke about this last year or not, but I do think a part of that is due to the fact that we have a three-year, as most high schools do, a three-year math requirement for graduation, and oftentimes those students who will struggle with math may not take that fourth year of math at the high school, at their senior year. So, it's something we need to take a look at and figure out how to continue to encourage those students to take some other math courses and be able to hopefully reduce that number. And I did share, these are our Dunlap High School AP scores, I put this on here. AP is new on the report card this year, but the information on there is very broad. It really just tells you the number of students that are enrolled in AP courses compared to the total number in the state, so it really doesn't give very good information, so I just wanted to pull, I know I have shared this with the board before, but wanted to share our AP scores on here so that you could see where those students are doing, how they are doing as we continue to track this.
And are they gonna do dual credit?
On the report card?
Uh-huh.
It's not currently on there, I don't know if it's something they're looking at doing in the future or not, but it isn't currently on there. And the AP, like I said, was just new this year. The other thing on here, this is the breakdown, so you can see, and I know it's kinda light out there in the audience, but you can see all of the different assessments that our students do take in relationship to AP and the number of students, and you can see, I mean, last spring we had a total of three hundred seventy-three exams that were taken. And you can see the breakdown up top of how they did on those, and then you can get into the specifics of how they're doing in different subject areas. And I know this is something that our teachers of those courses really look closely at, because their goal is to get those students to that three or higher, so they're, they're definitely always taking a look at this data and seeing what they can do to help their students improve. So, there was lots of information I just wanted to share, you can go to our website, we have everything on there. If you go and click on District, and then down on the side, there on the left, it says School Report Cards. They're all in there in PDF format, or you can go out to this website, this illinorreportcard.com, and you can search for any of the information, let's see, I do still have it linked here. It actually pulls up, sorry, gotta slide it over again. It pulls up this website, and then you can type in the name of the school and all of their information that I shared with you will pop up there for you, so, wanted to pull that out. As always, we take a look, you know, the report card does highlight the park data and the DLM, but we're always taking a look at all of our other data. Our buildings are, as Hickory Grove shared last month, Dunlap Middle did, and our other buildings will continue to share. So, that's everything I have for you, any questions?
Thank you for sharing, it's a lot of information.
It is.
And there's more than what is on here, if you start playing with it.
Yes.
Just one comment, Spanish is one of the courses that we've been emphasizing. Now, when I look at the number of tests, AP, it's very low.
It is.
It's kind of, it's interesting.
The number of students that continue through all the way to the five years.
Well, I think it's those kids who, you know, take four years, and in most colleges, they exempt you. I mean, sometimes they exempt you and then you still have to take another course, but it's like your real course, and probably only those that are going into, I don't know, the foreign language or international. What else, whatever else they would do.
Yeah, it is a small percentage of our students that do continue on to do the, the full five years of the foreign language.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, board, the next thing we had on the list was the information regarding the future agenda items that was available and the board reviewed, I don't think we had anything, we didn't have anything come through, there's a new process, a form is attached there, to print out and fill out if we have any new agenda items that you would like to see brought back in the future.
I just had a question, is the issue of tuition for seniors who parents have moved, is that a future agenda item that you had already added, or do we need to make that?
No, I put something in the update, I think that's next month, that I have a policy.
So we don't need to?
No, a policy's coming next month, recommendation.
Well, that concludes the information discussion item segment of the meeting, and we'll move into the consent agenda. I'll ask if there are any clarifications or discussion items regarding the consent agenda. I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented for the November sixteen, twenty sixteen Board of Education meeting.
Thank you, Beth, thank you, Paul, any discussion? Roll call, vote please.
Lou?
Aye.
Bowlesman?
Aye.
Fishroom?
Aye.
Coles Halsner?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Ree?
Aye.
Salin?
Aye.
Approved, thank you. We'll move into the action items now, and the first thing we have is the build list and treasures report. They were included in the board packet for review, and Mrs. Bevlin is here, if you have any questions. Anything you want us to add, any important details?
Everything is pretty, pretty simple, same payments that we make each month. The, you'll see, there was a large chunk coming out of the money report, but that was for the insurance renewal, so you won't see that go forward, but we did that on one big lump sum, so. I don't know, I think it's pretty tracking as we would like to see it.
Very good, that's what we wanna hear, so thank you. I'll ask for a motion to approve payment of bills.
I move to approve payment of the bills in the amount of two million six hundred forty thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand three cents as presented.
A second.
Thank you, Brian, thank you, Teresa. Any discussion? Roll call, vote please.
Bowlesman?
Aye.
Fishroom?
Aye.
Coles Halsner?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Ree?
Aye.
Salin?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Motion carried, thank you. The district investment report is available in your packet, is Mr. Winn here this evening? Okay, so Mr. Winn is not here with us this evening, but if you have any questions, you can please feel free to email, and we'll get them to him for those answers for you. All right, information regarding the emergency health, life, safety resolution for DVMS boilers included in the board packet for review by the board. Mrs. Bevlin is here to answer any questions you may have regarding the boiler, anything special, just?
Nothing special, just that we have limits out, and we've got three, the emergency keeps us from having to go off for a little bit, but we have actually three quotes that we went out and sought, so that we can make sure that we're getting the best deal possible. With changing just the heat exchanger, that's basically changing all the parts of the boiler, so the only thing that's not being replaced is the shell.
Very good, thank you. All right, I'll ask for a motion to approve the emergency health, life, safety resolution for DVMS boiler as presented.
I move to approve the emergency health, life, safety resolution for the DVMS boiler as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Karen, and thank you, Cheryl. Any discussion? Roll call, vote please.
Fishroom?
Aye.
Coles Halsner?
Aye.
Park?
Posthausser?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Ree?
Aye.
Zalwyn?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Bowlesman?
Aye. Motion carried, thank you. We have information regarding the 2016 tentative tax levy included in your board packet for review. Mrs. Bevlin is here to answer any questions. I know you put together quite a bit of work ahead of time. We had several emails that came out regarding the levy and the information regarding it. Is there any other questions regarding, or did you want to talk to us briefly about it?
I don't really have anything else. Do you guys have any other questions from earlier with the committee meeting? Or are you?
Because you already presented during the committee.
Presented during the committee meeting, so just if there aren't any. I don't have anything else.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, I'll ask for a motion to approve the 2016 tentative tax levy as presented.
I move to approve the 2016 tentative tax levy as presented.
I'll second.
All right, thank you Teresa, thank you Brian. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Posthausser?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Ree?
Aye.
Zalwyn?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Bowlesman?
Aye.
Dishroom?
Aye.
Motion carried, thank you. I'll state that this concludes the action item segment of the meeting, and we'll move into closed session. I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the closed session, please.
I move to adjourn to closed session for the following purposes as stated in the Open Meetings Act. One, student disciplinary cases. Two, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body. And number three, discussion of minutes of meetings lawfully closed. Second.
All right, thank you Cheryl, and thank you Karen. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Park?
Aye.
Ree?
Aye.
Zalwyn?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Bowlesman?
Aye.
Dishroom?
Aye.
Posthausser?
Aye.
Motion carried, thank you all so much for joining us for the November meeting. Get right to the motions here. Can we have a motion to approve the Human Resources Consent Agenda for 2016-17?
I move to approve the Human Resources Consent Agenda for 2016-17 as presented.
Second.
Okay, thank you Cheryl, thank you Paul. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ree?
Please.
Zalwyn?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Bowlesman?
Aye.
Dishroom?
Aye.
Posthausser?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Motion carries. I ask for a motion to approve the closed session minutes.
I move to approve the closed session minutes. Closed session minutes of the regular board meeting, October 19, 2016.
Second.
All right, thank you Beth, thank you Teresa. Any discussion? All right, roll call vote, please.
Lou?
Aye.
Bowlesman?
Aye.
Dishroom? Aye.
Posthausser?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Ree?
Aye.
Zalwyn?
Aye.
All right, motion carried, thank you. Any other items for discussion this evening? Anybody else? I know you're all tired, we've been doing a lot, but I do want to say thank you, thank you Dr. Parker for acknowledging, and thank you to all of the board members. You know, I mean, it is, people always say it's a thankless job, I mean, you don't get paid for it. People will tell you something's wrong, tell them the doctor paid. But honestly...
Tell them what?
Tell them the doctor paid.
Doctor paid.
But I mean, thank you all. I mean, obviously, it's a commitment, and, you know, just thank everybody for what you do, for being here and supporting the district, and I think we're all here for the right reasons, and we just want to keep the, keep the vote moving forward, okay? So appreciate everybody, and we'll see some people at the conference on the weekend, so look forward to it. I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, thank you Teresa, and thank you Cheryl. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried, and we're out of here at 10:20.